Good evening and welcome. I would like to welcome everybody to our joint meeting annual event. We got a little bit extra tonight as we got to talking about what we were going to be doing. So, I'd like to call the meeting to order, document the time at 6 o'clock. And first, if you would, join me in the pledge.
Flag in the back.
For side. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, very good. Again, welcome and thank you all for coming. The next piece on our agenda, I wanted to spend about a minute and a half just to define what it is we're gonna do and why, just to give you a little bit of a background, how we tie our board into the, in with what's going on in the school. Mindfulness, we did a mindfulness routine in the city a couple of years back, was it four years now? And we had several meetings, we incorporated a lot of the mindfulness activity into the school. We had a elementary school group come in one night and helped us with understanding what the mindfulness was, what the approach was, what it was for, and why they did it. And we adopted it in our meetings as a way, pretty much to take our heads from where we've been for the last eight, 10 hours, and try to turn everything back, just if it takes 30 seconds to a minute, to try to turn it into what are we gonna do here tonight and why are we here? So, just a moment of reflection of, you know, trying to wipe out where we've been and bring in some calm in order to start what we're doing. So, we'll ask you, I'm gonna ask Sean to lead, Tori has been our lead mindfulness and she's out this evening. So, Sean with that, if you could lead us through.
Sure, and I invite everybody here to join us in this. As Mike said, this is something that we do in the school on a daily basis, both students and staff at different junctures to kind of ground ourselves and regulate ourselves and be present with each other. So, very symbolic that we do this in our board meetings to model that for our community. And so, I would just ask you to find a comfortable seat. And then come on back. Thank you.
Some nights, depending on the day at work, that makes a whole lot more difference than others. So, next item, agenda review and adjustments. Anything in the agenda that anybody had any questions about manipulating? We're essentially the meeting tonight, we're called to order a joint meeting. Come on in, come on in, find a seat. Called to order a joint meeting, we'll do our business that we have here. It's an equity dialogue, public comments equity dialogue. Some basic information about the city and the school to try to tie us together on things that people may not necessarily know or understand, and then our MOU, memorandum of understanding about how we deal with each other to try to ensure that we don't double dip anything we do with the community as far as tax dollars and time go. And then we'll adjourn the joint meeting. I assume you guys have some other business to do tonight, or is this?
We do not.
Okay, so you will be off the hook after that, and we as a school board have one more item. We'll call another meeting to order, do our thing, and then finish up. So, any questions on that piece? Great. Public comments? Any public comments?
I guess so.
Absolutely. You introduce yourself and let us know if you want to stand up. Yeah, anyway, right there is fine.
My name's Darryl Desatels. I served on the school board for five years, I've served on city council for eight. So, and I did three on the DRB after that, so I did my time for the city. And I came across something on the winuskivermont.gov, okay, which is the official site for the Winuski City Council. And I came across this document you guys have put on here, so as far as I'm concerned, that's an official document, okay? Signed by school, or the names on the cover page are all school board and city council members. Okay, and I started reading this and I found it very, very, got very angry reading this. I've always been proud of the city until I started reading this document. On the bottom of page four of this document, it is the pilot equity dialogue group, which you guys are gonna be talking about. And it, right there on the bottom of page four, there's a tremendous, huge racist statement talking about white supremacy culture. I find that very offensive, okay, very, very offensive for the white supremacy culture. This is Winuski, okay? We've never had a problem with racism in Winuski that I'm aware of. But all of a sudden, we've got white supremacy culture coming in. Okay, I don't know where that came from, I don't know whose idea that was, but whoever it was, in my opinion, should be fired, okay? That's a racist statement. And this statement is all about peace, between making peace between different peoples, but that's a statement that'll light a fire, okay? And on the next page, it describes white supremacy, the whole page five on this document, okay? And I just want to read one part, well, a couple parts, but on the top page, top of the page, talks about the characteristics of white supremacy, okay? And they include perfectionism, a sense of urgency, worship of the written word, fear of contact, and paternalism, and more, okay? The thing is worship and the written word. What is the written word? The federal constitution, the state constitution? I've got a copy of the state constitution here, which I downloaded and copied off about voting, okay? And it's pretty explicit on who can and cannot vote in the state of Vermont. This is the law. I talked to some people and I found out that this is a law regardless, it was some cities, towns, or some board members, or someone somewhere else is discussing. This is the law, okay? And we're not holding, if this moves on, we're not holding to that. But as you go on, on page five, implications of white supremacy, okay? And it goes on saying, "A fractured and damaged community." Anybody think this community is fractured and damaged because of white folks? I'm not pointing skin color out here, but somebody did. And that is a total shame and a total disgrace on this school board and on this city council for approving those words. It could have been something less fierce, okay? And dismantling white supremacy? So, we do have a problem in your position? You think we have a problem, we have to dismantle it? And what is possible if we're able to dismantle white supremacy is the next case? I mean, it just goes on and on and on and on, and some of the things are, in my opinion, are real stupid. And here's one of the things about dismantling it. Stop asking people where you're from? I don't get it. Any of you ever fly in an airplane, or on a train, or a bus, you're sitting next to somebody? You start up a conversation with somebody? What's one of the things you always ask? Oh, my name is, I'm from, where are you from? It's common. That's not a racist statement. Now, I am angry, I've always been proud of Winuski. I'm not so sure anymore. This is totally over the top. And how can anybody support one skin color over another and that's what this is doing? They're saying we want to make every skin color the same, except for white. You know, I don't get it. Where are you people coming from? Where are you getting your information? You know, what are you thinking? Is what I'm getting at. What are you thinking when you make statements?
Would you like a response?
Yeah.
Or would you like to go on longer?
No, I'm pretty much done, but this, you know, I know you guys are gonna try to explain it away in your legalistic ways, but the fact is, this should have never been written.
So, white supremacy culture is an industry standard that refers to white dominant culture. We live in a culture where white people have more power than others. This has happened historically because of the foundations of where our country was built, on racism. And what we are discussing in here is how to not fall into the same behaviors over and over again that keep power where it already is, but how to consider other points of view and make sure that we are including everyone in our processes, and not just the people who already have power.
Well, the people that already have power, you can't, you can't explain it away, but the white race is dominant in this country.
Right, and we would like to discuss how to address that issue.
And it has the power because there's more of them, okay? There are more of them. I don't see anybody, maybe there are some selected people out there who are abusing it, but for the most part, I don't see that.
So, I would like to make a recommendation, since the next item on the agenda is exactly getting into a lot more of the detail of that, carry on this discussion as we go through the presentation to see if that A, answers some of your questions, or B, if we can answer any of the others as we go through. Does that, would that work?
Yeah, it'd be fine.
As this was part of the public comment section, were there any other public comments? Okay, alright, thank you. And thank you for bringing the comments forward. Hopefully, we can weave that into what we're doing next. So, as we get into the next section of our agenda, the equity dialogue group report, this is, we're gonna have Christine give the background on where this all came from, and then we've got two follow-up pieces, I guess, from that work, so with that, Christine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So, last year, the previous city council started discussing representation and engagement in the community, and how we weren't seeing representation or engagement that reflected the actual community of Winuski. You know, we see the same faces that show up to our meetings, the same people reaching out to us. And we wanted to do some work to find new ways to change that, to get more people engaged, to get more representation. Specifically, we are seeing a demographic trend there where we have a lot of folks who are maybe born and raised in Winuski, and they are engaged, but folks who are moving here, new Americans, for example, are not engaged. We're not engaging them, we want to make sure they're represented in our decision-making. So, we engaged Creative Discourse to, as professional trainers in this area, to take us through a process. Started in April with a large summit with...
About 40 people?
Forty people, thank you. Fifty? Including city leaders, staff, city council, school leaders, school staff, and other just community leaders that we identified. So, we spent a full Saturday talking about what are the equity issues that we want to address in the city? What are maybe action steps we can take, or things we should be thinking about? How can we get closer to having an equitable experience for everyone? Out of that, we then narrowed to a smaller group of folks who wanted to continue those discussions, who wanted to continue building relationships, looking for action steps, and digging into what we can do to bring us as the school board and as the city council, as the leadership team, some ideas and recommendations that we can consider moving forward. So, things we can consider to, as new processes, or process changes, or different ways that we can engage each other, different ways we can engage residents. So, tonight, we're gonna hear about what came out of those discussions and what are the recommendations and ideas for building more equity in both the school and the city for Winuski as a whole.
And in the documents that are posted with the meeting, there is a long, the history of all of, pretty much what you went through is in there.
That's right. The context is included, the history, as well as some of the outcomes that we had from both the meeting and from the follow-up sessions.
Which we're not gonna go through, we're getting to the, what was the outcome.
The recommendations, yeah.
Alright, and so...
Are they, oh, yes. Sue McCormick and Kasia Rahm are here. These are the members, Sue McCormick of Creative Discourse, and Kasia Rahm actually walked us through this, the entire process and facilitated this for us. So, thank you. Nice to see you. And if you want to say anything, add to that, if anyone wants to add to that.
I'd like to open that up as well to whoever else came. This is an open dialogue, so I'd like to keep it open and civil and a good dialogue. Is that Hal? I mean, are you next? Yeah. And you're all set up?
I'm Hal Bolston, city councilor. It's my second year on the council. So, I was on the council when this all came about, when we had a retreat June a year ago, as Mayor Lot explained. And we had been talking about this and really came to a point where we wanted to do something. So, had the summit and the stuff, the conference meetings. And it was a very rich process. We had 15 people who would gather over five or six meetings. And at this conclusion, we have two recommendations to make in terms of how do we move our city in a way that is more equitable? So, I'm gonna present the proposed project that we came up with, which is an equity leadership council. So, why equity? Well, just to kind of set the tables, I think there's always confusion about equity and equality. And I have a simple way to present it. I think equality is when we all have shoes on our feet. Equity is when we have shoes that fit. So, how do we, how do we make it possible for people to be involved in our democratic process who may have barriers, who may have obstacles, to be a participant? And when we have an equitable approach, we're gonna address those needs and make sure who needs to be at the table can be at the table. So, I believe equity is a strength. I believe diversity is a strength. You look at any successful Fortune 500 company, it's all about diversity. We have a global market. How do we best pull together the best thinking, the best ideas, to come up with the best product and services? So, I think we can take some cues from the business sector that has really addressed this as an imperative. And I think if we're gonna have a community that works for all people, we always have to be concerned about equity. And I think the best way to achieve equity is to understand what's inequitable, what's not working for people to be a part of our process. So, if we can learn to address, recognize inequities, we can achieve equity. So, this equity leadership council would be an advisory body. We're proposing that it would be comprised of seven citizens from our community. Once this idea is approved by the city council, we can then do the necessary outreach to invite people to apply and to be part of this advisory council to the city council. So, in a sense, it will be creating an equity lens for our city council. So, as we deliberate and create policy and we act on things, are we doing it through an equitable lens? You know, who are we leaving out? Who's being harmed? And we have to have a different outlook in terms of how we view governance to make it work for all people. So, as I said, it's an advisory body that would serve a term, as many of our commissions do. It will be the eyes and ears for the city council in terms of, you know, making equitable decisions. It will also include possibly four non-voting members from the city staff who can go back and report to their departments about the work that is being done. And I think it'll be an ongoing process for us as a city council to really learn about what's not working in our city, and how do we address that? And how do we figure out a way so that all can be involved? So, our next steps, this idea has to be approved by the city council in terms of a charter. A charter's been proposed, and that'll be brought up at our next meeting. We will have a process to do community outreach to make sure we get the right people at the table to be part of this effort. And then the members will be chosen, and then the work will begin. So, that in essence is what we're looking at in terms of an equity leadership council for the city of Winuski. Are there any questions, comments?
Hal, how do you see the work of this group differing from any other commission?
I see it differently because it's almost like an umbrella organization that's going to be bringing forward feedback from our community. We have a lot of different communities within our community. So, how do they have a voice in terms of how we do our governance? So, I see it almost as an ombudsman type of approach where it will really have on the lens of making sure we're on the right track to achieve equity.
And have you thought about, so one of the issues that we are trying to address is that we don't get representation in our commissions, like we'd like to see to reflect the community? Have you thought about how you can make that happen in this body? Like, what can be done different to make that happen here versus what we have been doing?
I think this body will have what I call connectors, people who are really connected into the various communities, who can have that personal relationship with folks, who can explain to folks why this commission or that commission is important for them to consider. I think it will really enhance our outreach in terms of diversifying the people that participate in the work of the government. Yes, Nicole?
So, I just wanted to offer some comments based on the experience and the recommendations from the group. When I was on councils, when we sort of conceptualized this notion that we needed to really focus on ensuring that the elected bodies and even the commissions were being mindful of the fact that we don't necessarily represent everyone in this community. We don't know the stories that they hold, and we don't, we all have blind spots, frankly, because we bring our own experience to the table when we make decisions, and that's fantastic. It's great that we have so much, so many people that are interested in devoting countless hours of their time to make this city a better place. But not everybody's at the table, and there's good reasons why. I found the experience of serving with this group that produced this report to be one of the most rewarding that I've had, and it was because it was a really diverse group of folks, that, you know, many of whom, our paths have never crossed, and despite the fact that we're 1.4 per miles. And we spent a lot of time, thanks to the facilitation of Kasia and Sue, unpacking our experiences of living in this community, and it's, we don't have the same experiences living here. And too often, our experiences are determined by the color of our skin, the religion that we practice, the economic circumstances that we face. And I think we need to create more spaces for people to have that kind of dialogue. So, I think this council is a great way to formalize that. And I for one know that we had, I don't know how many of us, 12, who came together every couple weeks for six or seven sessions and dug in deep. And I'm hopeful that, and we didn't want to say goodbye, frankly. So, I think there's a lot of people that are interested in continuing that conversation. It's not intended to, I think the use of the term white supremacy, it's not surprising to me that that raised some concerns for folks. It is a term of art, and it is a term used to reflect the power system that has been built up over centuries. And it is not intended to point fingers at anybody sitting around these tables or who has sat at these tables in the past. It's just a reality of the society that we live in that's evolved, and the culture that we have inherited. And if we're gonna do something different, then we need to name it, and I think this is a great place.
Thanks, Nicole. I just want to share a thought. I'm on the faculty of the Snelling Center and Vermont Leadership Institute, and we had a session maybe six months ago, and we were exploring race, power, and privilege, and white supremacy culture. And one of the participants in the cohort said, "You know what? If you just remove white supremacy and replace it with American, that's exactly what this is about. It's the American culture. It affects all of us, not just white people, not just black and brown people. We're all impacted by this system of doing things." So, that to me is what we really need to be honest with, and how does that really mitigate equity? Any other comments or questions?
Other question?
Sure.
This equity council, would it be better served as a commission? Because isn't, I'm trying to determine if it's our job to reach out for equality by our commissions or being the outreach of the community, of all communities in Winuski? And I'm wondering if we start a pilot program as a commission? Because what I'm, I want to know how, we're gonna get the money, you want to pay people to be on the equity council that we're gonna choose instead of being voted on. So, one, I'd like to know where the money's gonna come from for that, for that budget process. And for two, I'm wondering if it would counter back a little bit, scale back, and put an equity commission in place as a pilot run to see if that is even something that will work? Because I think it's our job as city councillors to reach out to the community because we were elected to do that, for all voices of Winuski, not just, you know, for certain sections of Winuski. And I think it's our job to do that. And I think if we did a pilot program under an equity commission, like, just like the other commissions we have, I think that might be a good start, instead of throwing a council on payroll that the city or taxpayers have to pay for.
Well, as far as pay, we haven't gotten to that level of detail. So, I can't really answer that at this point. But the reason why I like the word council, because it connects it to us as a council. So, that's why it's different than a typical commission. Commissions have a specific focus that they work on. This is like an umbrella approach to make sure equity is working in every way possible in all of the work that we do as city councillors. So, having more eyes and ears, I think is a good thing, and that's why it was created.
Well, I'm reading right here on the report, saying hire a group of six or seven people to represent the diversity of Winuski, and they would be paid $30 an hour for a 24-weekly one-hour meeting.
It could be paid. That was a possibility.
Yeah, those details have yet to be...
Okay.
And I would take us back to the fact that, like, we are receiving this information as recommendations from the group. This is something that we need to continue to discuss and see, how can we work some, all, part of these recommendations into what we're doing?
Okay, but correct me if I'm wrong, Hal just said this is coming up for our next council meeting to be approved on?
It can be an item on the agenda, but again, we can continue to discuss it and not make an approval if we are not ready, as all items technically.
Sure.
And I think it might help just to kind of talk a little bit more about the process and where this report relates to these recommendations that are being discussed today. So, the report was the output of work of six intensive weeks, and it was developed by volunteers and people at the end of their contract. And so, I think we put a lot of good ideas out there, and the idea was that this is a starting point for a conversation and not the final draft. So, I think what I'm assuming, and I believe what Hal is presenting, what the other group is gonna present, really seeks to give a little bit more information and kind of try and flesh some of those ideas out. The charter is the way that we do that with this, is this is the roles and responsibilities of this group, and that's kind of the next step. So, I think there's a lot of ideas, and he has a lot of notes in here, that do represent the work of the group but don't necessarily mean that's like the verbatim what's being brought to these groups today to approve or to consider as the final proposal. These are really first starting points, and where we want to go from here is up to this group, I think. If that helps, kind of, because I do agree, like, reading that, there are some very specific things in there, but that was, like, we were trying to provide details that could help us think about what this would be.
Well, again, reading this, there's some language in here that I think needs to be reworded anyway. But when I heard him say that we're gonna go to our next council meeting to approve something like this, I think there needs to be more discussion.
I misspoke, Mike, okay? I misspoke.
No, no, well, you just let it go. No, this is why we're talking about this, Hal.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you can let that go. I misspoke.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Does he hand?
Yeah. I, one, I just wanted to say I appreciate the council pursuing this, because this is difficult work, really, really important work, I think, in our city, work that we have struggled with in the school district, and I think we've made strides, but it is still a struggle. And one of the things I appreciate the most was our student voices that were heard in that process were incredibly powerful, and they felt really empowered by the adults who were facilitating and giving them the opportunity to have voice in that process. One of the things that struck me six years ago, when I was thinking about this position, was looking at our youth risk behavior survey, and it said, less than 50% of our high school students felt that the community really valued them and felt that they mattered. And that number has started to get a little bit better, but these are the kinds of opportunities that we create for young people that are going to really bend the curve on that and create more leadership and create more equity. The second piece is, the way that I was viewing this is that it's a filter, it is a lens to take some of the excellent work that is already going on at the city and the school level and kind of run it through that equity filter and see if there are pieces that we might be missing that might enhance it. You know, for instance, I can think about the housing commission that I am on, and it would be helpful sometimes when we're sitting there, you know, it's not a really diverse group of people sitting around the table. And if we're thinking about policies that we want to recommend to the council about affordable housing or about housing trust, it would be great to have a diverse group of people that we could say, that represent many aspects of our community and say, "Tell us what you're feeling, you know, how do you think about this?" And then the council has more information to act on the work that the commissions are already doing, opposed to it being a silo that's kind of creating, just trying to create equity in a vacuum.
Kind of along those lines, Hal, did you talk, did your group talk a little bit more about kind of what triggers this group to get involved? Are there certain kind of ideas for, like, I mean, I think the equity topics in a lot of things, some of our agenda items have probably minimal equity impact, they may not be worth trying to engage this group around. Did you talk at all about kind of criteria or kind of triggers to pull this group in for certain topics?
Well, I think this group could also be informative to the council in terms of agenda items that we're not even thinking about. So I think that could be a real benefit to having a diverse group of eyes and ears looking at our community and communicating with us. So I really imagine them helping us have the right agenda.
Can you talk throughout the core or possibly for staff members to be on this, and is there an impact or tools that they'd be able to bring back from this council to help have those equity, you know, have that equity lens throughout the city in terms of the work that we do operationally?
I would hope so, but I just think they're very present and being part of the dialogue would be very informative to their colleagues about, you know, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? So I don't necessarily see it as really structured thing, but I just think it's just being present and being able to be communicating back to their team about issues around equity that we might be concerned about.
So that gets me thinking about the purpose of this body, and is this something that is ongoing indeterminately, or does it eventually outlive itself because it changes what we are doing in the existing structure?
Well, if we get to be an equitable community, there you got it. But I'm not so sure if that will be the end goal. I think it's a marathon. It's constant work. It's kind of like, you know, we always hear the term cultural competency, and I just don't buy that, because I don't think we can ever be competent about culture, because it's always changing. Now, we can be intelligent, and I think this, this kind of body will help us become more intelligent about our work in terms of equity. So there's always something to learn, and as Nicole talked about, we have blind spots. And if we can learn about our blind spots and manage it, then we're going to be able to govern in an equitable way. So I see it as ongoing. Cool?
So I just, we met last week to talk about this concept, and as someone who has served on commissions and the council, I do think it's important for the council to be thinking about, I think your question is a good one, Jim, in terms of what's the scope and what's the, what are the sort of triggers? Because I think there is a risk of establishing a council and not being clear about what its role is, and that leading to frustration. I've seen that happen with commissions in the city in the past, where there's, people think they're, they're going to weigh in on, in this way at this time, and turns out that's, that feedback's not welcome at that stage, and nothing, you know, you could actually find ourselves taking a few steps backward in terms of trust, relationships, goodwill, et cetera, if we're not clear from the, from the outset. So I think, and we talked about, in addition to the charter, having some protocols or getting pretty clear early on in the group's existence around how it will engage with the city, so that there's, you know, before things get too far down a road and folks start to get frustrated, there's alignment in terms of how, how the council can advise the council and other bodies. And I am, oh, maybe more optimistic. I, you know, the state just hired a new equity, I can't remember her title, but there was a great interview with her this week, and she said, "I'm looking to put myself out of business." And I'd say, you know, that should be a goal here, is that I would hope that this, this equity leadership council would be able to initiate the start of a different way of thinking and doing business in the city, so that five years from now, that's just part of how we operate. It's become part of our culture. That, to me, would be success. So I do think clarity and alignment in terms of the role, and hoping for the best in terms of other commissions being, carrying the work forward, and the council is carrying the work forward.
I think, well, that's a good point, right, is that getting to a scope of work and admission is something that needs to happen before moving officially forward. I think also, that's incredibly important, because we have specific state statutes and procedures that we legally must follow, so we need to know how this group can fit into that structure without being put in a position where we ask them for input, and it turns out we can't do the thing they suggested anyway legally. So I think there's a lot of staff thought that can go into this as well.
One more comment, if you have time? So I would just encourage whoever's composing this to think about, whenever we try to create something that's inclusive, we risk excluding, you know, or the perception of exclusion. And I remember when I first got, Deke and I were talking about like this elders council, you know, and when we sat down to try and think of the composition, we always felt like we got giant, and we always felt like we're still missing a voice or something. So I don't, I'm just, if you guys talked about that or curious about how you go about that and really make it inclusive, so while you're also limited by a budget, it sounds like, as well.
Well, I think we're going to have to create some type of matrix to make sure we're, it's kind of like if you get into a search process and you don't get that inclusive participation, then it's a failed search. It should be. So I think we just, we've got to spend the time and be careful about how do we get the maximum amount of diversity in terms of voices. There will have to be a cutoff, we just can't have a committee of 40 people, but I think that will be real due diligence to make sure we do our best.
Do you have a comment on that?
Sure.
I hate to sound like I'm tooting my own horn, but when I spent 13 years between the two boards, every month, one Saturday a month, I used to go out different parts of the city, and I used to knock door to door, just asking people if they had any concerns. I represented the school, or at the time, the city, you know, do you have any concerns that I could bring before the board? And a lot of people did, and I write those down, and I bring them before the board. And the board, whichever one it was, they took that into consideration and worked on it. And we got in contact with those people. I asked them, I says, "Can I have your phone number? Can I call you back with an answer?" And they all said yes, and that was the most rewarding times I had on either council. And I'm wondering how many of you people have done that, taken time to go door to door outside of election time? You know, that don't count, but after you get elected and you're settled in, go door to door, talk to people. You want to learn something? I tell you, you're going to learn something. Some people are going to be very angry, they're going to want to rip your head off, they never do, but they're going to want to. They're that angry, but you know what? You learn. You learn what the people really want. When you go to five different houses, and all the people have the same general complaint, you know you've got an issue. Deal with that issue. That's all I got to say about that part.
Thank you.
We have one more subset here. Anything more for Hal and the equity council? All right, step two.
Is that you, Jim?
That is us. So I will admit to not bringing a dongle that connects to a projector, so I hope that whatever's up there works, and if not, we'll revise. So I'm just going to set this up technologically, and then I'm going to turn it over to Luke Dorfman.
So, quick intro.
Yes.
Yes. So, my name is Jim Duncan, I'm a council for Winuski, and we are presenting a second idea that was forwarded as one to consider for further development. So there's a chapter or section in the equity report that includes a discussion of expanding the cultural liaison or the homeschool liaison role here at the school to increase engagement with the community. So we've had a group of people working over the last couple of months to figure out some of the details that might go into that, and again, some of the kind of general policy or guidance that would help support that. So I'm going to pass, these are just the same things that you'll see on the screen. I don't know how many we have, I think council's got some, and they've got it? Okay, I'll have it. Just to have something assigned to you, because I did ask you, you're a good job at Hal and images as opposed to words, so there'll be a little bit of reading. And I think we have enough that we can pass these around, if people in the audience would like to look at them as well. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Luke Dorfman to kind of pick us up.
All right. So hello, everyone. My name's Luke Dorfman. I'm a teacher here at the high school, and I'm just going to begin really briefly by doing a little personal anecdote. So first of all, I just want to share a real appreciation for this city as really setting equity as a main priority. I think, just from my own personal experience being involved in these equity dialogues, has really been transformative for my own sense of self and my own sense of place within the Winuski community. It's exposed me to so many other stories, you know, both with student stories and stories of our families who are here, and it's just really broadened my horizon, and it's been really sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? It's been very humbling. And so it's just, I feel a real privilege having been a part of these equity dialogues, and I really do hope that these conversations do continue, and this very much is a beginning point. And also, just a quick aside, you know, I think what Sean was saying earlier about having our students involved in these conversations, I think has been really profound, and it's helped me really reflect on my own role as an educator. And so it's just been a real honor, having students thinking about these very topics and issues that you yourselves as city councillors and school board members are grappling with yourselves, you know, when it comes to identity and how your own identity affects the way other people are going to interact with you, and how that might shape particular biases or perspectives that we each have. And then, of course, within our community, where are those levers of power, and how does our own sense of privilege factor into all of this? And so we're having students grapple with these very same ideas, and so it's just that partnership between what's going on in the school and what you as broader community members are engaging with, it's just really powerful. So I will stop my own personal ramble. And so here's our recommendation, and so as Jim was just mentioning, it's think about how we can open new avenues of communication by extending the homeschool liaison that exists already in the school district. And so to get things started, we thought it would be important to begin with the vision. So what is it that our aspirations are? What do we actually hope, you know, Winuski continues to evolve into? And so we wanted to kind of paint that picture, you can kind of think of this as sort of what-if statements, all right? So I'm actually, I'm just going to kind of walk us through these, so like, what if there's a network of connections between our new American community members, our recent refugee community members, and formal leaders with liaisons as sort of institutional pillars to keep these connections functioning and being really robust and really authentic? Another what-if, right? What if these institutionally supported roles, right, of these liaisons? What if they're attractive and viable career options proportionate to the value that they bring to our community, right? These liaisons, actually, Alex was coming up with this interesting metaphor that I thought was kind of helpful, but to think about the true impact that these liaisons do have for our community, it's really remarkable, and I think it's kind of, sometimes it's a little hidden, it's a little bit more invisible. And so finding ways to really bring that out and to really celebrate those positions, because they really do have an incredible impact on our students, on our young people, and our families here. I think I kind of already started to dabble in that third one, right? What if these liaisons can use institutional support to amplify voices of underrepresented community members, doing so in a quick and efficient manner, right? So that these diverse range of perspectives can really rise up efficiently and authentic, which is obviously of most importance, as we continue to try to be more inclusive and more cohesive as a whole community. So there's our vision. That's what we are aspiring to. And so in order to really, you know, help us begin to get there, we have to think about, well, where are we right now? And so where are we right now? We do have equity challenges that we're trying to confront. And so a couple of those look like this. So there's a lack of institutional support and capacity for communication and engagement among our elected bodies, city staff, and then the diverse range of Winuski community members, I think everything that Hal was describing, and certainly what was sort of rising up to the surface in that conversation from earlier, really kind of speaks to this piece. And then furthermore, one other challenge, one other equity challenge that we were sort of confronting here, and that we hope that this proposal and these recommendations begin to help us think about how to solve, is inadequate support, compensation, and work-life balance for those liaisons who are working well beyond full-time and normal working hours. And so we do hope that our recommendation is going to start to light some light bulbs in terms of thinking about how we might be able to really, again, bring up those positions and really, you know, continue to bring more and more value to them because of how central they are to our community. And so some of the barriers to participation and engagement, these are actually coming from those equity dialogues. So this is from our broader group, not just the groups who are really focused on these individual recommendations. You know, so we can start to define those equity challenges in maybe more specific terms, or, yeah, I think these are a bit more specific. So, you know, they are listed here, right? So there's this possible mistrust of elected officials and city staff that exists in the community. And again, I do want to, before I actually go deeper into this, I think just hit on one more sort of part of the process of these equity dialogues. They were encompassing a wide range of perspectives in the community, both broader community members, but then also community leaders. And so these are, again, a lot of these points that are And then further barriers to that access could be language, right? I mean, we are, you know, our government operates within the English language, but many of our community members, English is something that they're just beginning to learn. And so certainly then therefore poses itself as a barrier. And then, of course, time, right? In order to actually show up at various meetings and to have their voices heard, not everyone has the time, particularly when certain meetings might be held. And so yet another barrier. Similarly, like lack of transportation, I think fits right into that. And then other community members believe that their voices are not welcomed or sought in decision-making processes. Again, that could be just out of history, right? That they've experienced with other decision-making bodies where like, when they've shared something, it was completely just shot down, and it wasn't heard. And so they might feel as though, well, why make that effort again, right? So just yet another potential barrier. And then something else that certainly came out, particularly as people were reflecting on themselves, which was really fascinating, was kind of a discomfort to go to communities where you don't traditionally interact and to talk with people who you might not normally talk to. That seemed to be a common theme, and I actually think it really connects with the comment that was just made about the importance of reaching out to different parts of the community, particularly the parts that you might be less familiar, less comfortable with. So again, that discomfort poses itself as a barrier. So that's kind of me setting up this vision and then some of the challenges that are existing in the community. And I'm going to turn it over to Alex, who's going to go a little bit deeper for us.
And so I'm Alex. I'm a member of the school board. And I got to admit, I'm a little spoken and shaken in all the mistrust of someone that's new to the community, even though I'm not a new American, I felt just now in terms of comments. And even though I know I had a voice on the school board, I was the one that brought up a lot of those racism interactions that I have faced in Winuski itself. And I'm shaking a little bit because I just heard all my experiences be dissuaded. And I'm wondering, do I still have a voice in this community? And I know I do. And I've been asked a question about whether I actually belong in this community in the way I present information on the school board. And I don't want to dis, not engage with the passion, because that's what you have. I agree that you have passion that you have, but I also want you to know that I have passion. And we share the love for Winuski. And I get your anger comes from out of love because you really love this place. And so instead of responding with anger, I'm going to ask you, after the meeting, come get my email, shoot me an email, and I would love to have the opportunity to have conversation over meals because I love food. We have great food places in Winuski. And I would like to share with you some of this. And they never come to the level of some of what our new Americans may face. And I know as a professional, as someone as a well-respected community member in Winuski, a well-respected community member at the university that I work and love as a senior administrator, I cannot believe I'm actually quivering and shaking because I felt someone's anger and had my experiences dismissed. And that hurts a lot. And so, but I'm going to try to answer that with compassion and love because I actually understand why it's anger. And the concept of this, like, bringing in and expanding the roles of the liaison is because we're not working from deficits. We don't have to start from scratch. My mama always said, don't reinvent the wheel if you don't have to. We have assets, and the assets that we have are the homeschool liaisons. And in that process, you'll see why we think that these are assets to our community and how we can embrace. It's because they can provide a new avenue for representing groups to bring out their voices that we are uncomfortable. Because if we do not allow them to vote, then it is even more of our responsibility to hear their voices in this community, right? Regardless of they can vote, because then we are responsible, city council leaders as school board members, to hear their voices. And then we should also be advised on the current issues that may actually affect them because, once again, I have always written that we are one Winuski. It is not about us or them or whatever. It is one Winuski. We are all one Winuski people, and we are all people affected by this community, and we love this community. They offer their culture because they want to be here, and we're giving them a chance. I was going to actually quote what is on the Statue of Liberty that says, "Bring us our weak" and all that, because that's what we represent. And I think we do represent that, what's good. And I think this is what our home liaisons can do. And really, they can help facilitate the interactions. When we talk about the distrust, I'm not saying that it's any of the actions that any one of us have done. But if you come from a country that has, where the government has been distrustful, has forced you out of your home country, there is a reason why they have that distrust. And we need to understand that history and be supportive of that voice, right? And I actually understand for a fact that there is fear to understand the other cultures, not because it's out of malice. It's because sometimes we just don't know how to interact in that community. It's fear. It's because of we want to do good and we don't want to actually, you know, colonize or whatever those words of white supremacy is, but our home liaisons can help facilitate. And one of the things that the ultimate goal of this project is not to use the home liaisons as the only vital point. We actually use a metaphor, the bow tie. But at the end, I will know that this is successful because we can actually start interacting together and not be fearful. As some wise president once said, there's nothing to fear but fear itself. And sometimes I think we let fear get in the way of ourselves because we're afraid of offending, right? But there's so much love in this community and so much stuff that people want to share, we just got to figure out how to tap into those levels. And why I really believe, what our home liaisons, we have six homeless school liaisons in this community. And one of the things that they have done that none of us have actually done really well is that they have built their trust with their communities. And you don't know why, how they built that trust. They not only work with the families, but they also help them drive to the schools, to the hospitals, and spend time with them. I actually had one limited experience with this because I actually helped out a Chinese family in this community. And I get the phone call at nine, and I'm sure that some of y'all don't do it. Y'all can relax sometimes at nine. But I actually had to come out. I'm lucky, I'm fortunate to be in a position where I can control my hours and come down to the school district. How about with the translation and do this? I was tired after one. Some of our home liaisons do this for 120 people in this community. And they don't, and you can see what languages that they do and the work that they do, and you can see what 5.44, and you can see the hours that they work and overall that. And if we are really serious about equity, we should really think about making these positions equitable. Because otherwise, we are no better than the other communities that take advantage of our people of color, the most vulnerable. And I want us to think about, and I agree, not worried about, I'm also worried like you, Mike, all, you know, the taxpayers questioning and all that. And it's a very fair question. But I also think that we are a model city in Winuski that can be an example for other states, for other cities in Vermont, for other states to figure out how to do this right. Because we are one Winuski, and we all believe in the faith in America. And so the key questions are, when do we actually get advised on these current issues? What are the current issues? And obviously, like I said, I'm going to, one episode, I'm not even arguing about non-voting or voting here, but we have a responsibility to make sure that we represent the voice of all. And if we're representing all, then we need to get input when there are decisions that place new fee requirements, restrictions that could have a differential impact. Decisions about allocations of resources or prioritizations of actions, or hiring communities and outside of commissions. And what that means in one sense is if we figure out a way, and I'm not saying that we have all the details here, but if we figure out how to do this, this is the pipeline that helps us diversify the city. Because what we do from an academic standpoint is we develop social capital for these communities to stay in these communities. What am I mean by social capital? We all know that jobs, half the times, the jobs are about relationships, right? And so if we have some hiring, you know, having our home-cult school liaisons be part of hiring communities for cities, they can pass on these words to the community members that are in there. They can also help translate some of the advanced degrees that some of our Winuskiites have earned from other countries that may not translate positively over here and help be that positive influence. And that's how we start diversifying. That's how we become one community. And so that's how we see the role one. And I'm going to turn it over to Jim to talk about the, yeah.
I can do this one if you want.
Yeah.
Okay. So thanks, Alex. And I just want to acknowledge that I appreciate you for taking the discomfort to go on a limb there and acknowledge that, the severity and weight of those emotions. So thank you for sharing, even though I know it's been hard. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about what implementing this role might look like. So we envisioned, as is shown, two different potential roles for this expansion. One is kind of advising on current issues and the scope and key questions of how we decide when that comes into play, was shown before, and then some key questions about, okay, how do we actually implement it? We tried not to go down this road too much to get into the nuts and bolts of the mechanics of it because that's not, we don't get paid to do that. And there are people much smarter than us who do figure that stuff out. So we looked at these key questions as maybe ways to start thinking about how implementation could go. How should this be implemented to ensure input is actionable, so we can actually do something with it? I think that's key. We can get a lot of input that we can't do anything with, kind of to your point, Christine, about legal issues. There's, how do we make sure that's acted upon when possible, and how do we communicate back when that action has been taken so that people know that that feedback is actually being used? And I think really importantly, how do we institutionalize these positions? We talked about the bow tie, which is we have city officials needing help or guidance or information input. We have a community that could have provided in a single liaison, trying to filter everything in both directions. That's the bow tie model. But if that position becomes institutionalized and supported, when those networks of relationships, when that person leaves the city, when this person stops being interested in getting involved, that we still have an institutionally supportive point that maintains those relationships going forward. So that's some implementation thoughts that we had. On the second role, this is kind of coming from the other direction. So the cultural, the homeschool liaisons could serve as a way to surface issues from the communities that they interact with to city leaders that we aren't even thinking of. So key questions that could come out of that are, what steps can we start with to build channels for actionable input? Again, thinking about how to help support our liaisons to know, to seek usable or actionable input on new issues? And how do we really build the trust with the community so that they actually feel that they can raise those issues, that they really do have power to suggest and receive action on something? So we've kind of presented these to this group as the point to which our work has come to. We have these key questions. We are looking for input. And I just want to kind of summarize what we've done to date, you know, how we got to this point. The equity dialogue surfaced this as an idea. We've had a series of one-on-one meetings with the cultural liaison, Winuski Housing Authority, and other dialogue members, and other sources of information, drafted this proposal, and presented this concept that we're here today on the last bullet. But really, next steps are the kind of interesting thing for me and for our group because we kind of looked at this and said, well, we kind of got somewhere, but we didn't get all the way there. So what do we do next to keep developing this idea? So continued dialogue and outreach to all the liaisons and other key partners would be really critical to continue to build this idea out. We've talked to some, but we haven't talked to all. Continuing to refine scope and implementation with input. And if there's a pilot idea that wants to be pursued, seeking that input on how that pilot should proceed, and then identifying some initial steps. The home, expanding the called homeschool liaisons would be a costly endeavor to do across the board all at once altogether. So what might be some initial steps that we could take that still provides some way to recognize liaison's role, institutionalize, support that they're already providing to the community, and expand what they can provide through additional resources? So those are the next steps. And I do want to just acknowledge, because I, we talked about this in pretty much every conversation that we've had, that this is targeting a certain subset of our community. This is the new American, the recent refugee population, and there are other underrepresented communities in this city that we also have equal trouble reaching. And it can be time, it can be transportation, it can be lack of understanding of the process or ambulatory disabilities, low-income white population, people who are of color who are not recent refugees or new Americans are also groups in this community that aren't going to be captured by this, and we acknowledge that and recognize that as actually a fundamental challenge, but also an opportunity because we think this, if this is successful, this model of having an institutionally supported contact role to feed information both ways, if it works for this group, it could be expanded to others that we aren't hearing from right now. So that's where we got to, and I added the recap of key questions. If you don't want to look in different pages, those are there. But that's where we've gotten to with our current role. Did I miss anything, Alex, that you wanted to add?
No.
Anyone else? I'm just looking at, Abeer, I don't want to put you on the spot. We did talk. Is there anything that I missed that you want to add?
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, well, I was going to defer to the school board first. I, and I need to do more thinking on this, but I see a lot of parallels between both of these suggestions. I think there is space to think more about, there's overlap in the purpose here, and there's overlap in the group that we're reaching out to. So I personally want to do more thinking about what that means, how we can maybe find efficiencies there, how these things can work together.
And just one thought with the liaisons. I think a lot of what was mentioned was the ability to reach out to various communities within our community to make sure we are all one. The opposite of that, or the communication flow backwards from that, though, is when you are told something, you understand what it is that you're being told. You're not guessing what it is, what the implications are. And sometimes that translation is a huge bit in ensuring that it goes cleanly and you understand what is coming back. So that two-way, that communication ends up being critical in both directions.
That's, I mean, literal translation, translation?
Both. I think it's a couple, and I think you're bringing up a great point, Mike, because there's definitely a lot of cultural things that we need to be aware of. I'm going to speak from a Chinese-American perspective. Like, you never actually ever, like, wear, like, do you ever give white flowers to a Chinese person? Because that's the only time you give white flowers to Chinese community members, that I can do. How do you build that trust? What is the words like in England? The difference between English and trainers is a sneaker versus a trainer. It's all those things. How we interpret language is very important. I think that's very important, why we need these kind of cultural liaisons to help us with that, to help us better understand so that we are exactly communicating the things that we're trying to implement, and they understand what's going on.
Yep. All right. Good piece of work. I know our liaison community in the school is extremely busy during the school year.
In the summer.
And during the summer as well, right? So that doesn't stop at the school door, nor during the school day, right, Abeer?
I just want to give one word. I had a surgery last week. Before I get surgery, I have to answer texting and emailing and families. And after I get out of the surgery, I don't have time to feel if the anesthesia is still in my body or not. I keep working. And that work is for Winuski. It's not just for anyone else. My community, if you like it or not, it's part of this city, it's part of this town. And most of us working in this town, I have been working in Winuski five years. It's healthy for Winuski to hear everybody and to include everybody. When we do that, it's not just about, oh, we want to get these people some positions of work. It's not the other reason. The reason is this community to be healthy, and we're not missing anyone. Because it's really hurt when the families. What do you know about the immigrants' family in Winuski? It's just like, they losing their teenagers, high school students, because they cannot make the communication with them. And that is by itself is not safety for Winuski. Because parents cannot do anything. They cannot communicate with anyone, not the school, not their kids, not the counselor. No one knows about their problems. It's a real issue, and it's a real problem.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
So I think...
It's just like, they losing their teenagers, high school students, because they cannot make the communication with them. And that is by itself is not safety for Winuski. Because parents cannot do anything. They cannot communicate with anyone, not the school, not their kids, not the counselor, no one knows about their problems. It's a real issue, it's a real problem.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, so I, I think, um, so I'm Jessie, I'm the city manager for, I don't know. I think especially on, on this recommendation, which is more kind of staff and operationally based, as opposed to the former one, which was more council and advisory based, although I agree that there are some parallels, parallel efforts that we need to work out. Um, is a great example of a piece of policy work that now needs to kind of move over or be informed by your chief administrative officers. So I think a, a part of the next steps really needs to be taking, if you all are, are telling me, as the council telling the manager and the school trustees telling the shop, telling Sean, that this is something you want to explore, then we have some work to do to figure out, um, the operational logistics, you know, figure out staffing, figure out supervision, figure out communication channels, figure out how to make that bow tie work. Um, and I would feel more comfortable with some, um, not necessarily a vote, but some like direction that, yes, you, you as elected officials would like your CAOs to spend some time diving into how we make this operational, using the vision that you all have laid out. I think that you guys have done an outstanding job, um, jumping into some of those operational weeds. And I think that we can, we can make it a little easier for you and, and help you in that way.
Well, it sounds like that's been started, but the next step's being refining the scope piece. Right.
Well, and answering some really key questions, you know, later on in the agenda, we'll, we'll have you consider the memorandum of understanding that outlines how we share other staff.
Right.
Um, you know, there's some really key questions about employment, about supervision, about communications, about, you know, what triggers engagement, how information flows, how, who, who on the city team, who on the school team is, are those kind of key players? I think there's some real operational logistics that we need to do some work on to bring back, to marry with the vision of it, to say, is this, do we have this right? Is this something that we want to continue to explore as a community?
Can I ask, um, do you have enough direction to work on those now? My sense was that our next steps require a little bit more visioning to give you that specific direction, or do, from what you've seen and heard, is that, is there enough there to start doing the work, so that when we come back, we're actually considering the feasibility alongside the vision?
I think there's some, I think it's shared work. I think we, I guess, Sean, I don't mean to speak for you, since technically these are your staff, not mine. Um, I think we need to engage, I think Sean and I need to be at the table for your continued conversations.
And I, I would agree. I also feel like there's more work to be done on the visioning and scope, but it is also hard to do that without the information of the actual operational piece, so.
Thank you. So taking an action out of here, then, what is that, that you would like to see, Jessie? Something for our next meetings to, to give that direction for you guys to go? We're not setting here that...
I mean, I guess from my perspective, and, and, again, Sean, I don't mean to speak for you, but I, I feel like I have, I'm getting some head nods of, yes, employee, go do some work here. I don't necessarily need a vote, but I, but this is, um, I want to make sure Sean also feels comfortable that you can dedicate some time and effort to this.
Yes. After we get school open, please.
Tomorrow morning, we'll meet at eight thirty. I also wonder, is this something we want to, do we want to revisit the scope and vision at our next meeting? Like, does that timing align, or should we be waiting for you to take, for there to be some staff action first?
I mean, the key questions that we laid out are pretty foundational, um, and we didn't answer them. We have ideas, but those aren't, um, given. I think that we will continue, I would like to continue with the dialogue, because we have momentum, um, particularly with more of the homeschool liaisons, because that was something that we had talked about doing anyways. Um, so we can provide more information and maybe some ideas that came out of that group, um, back to the, to the larger council, and I think that might be a useful time for discussion, because there'll be meat to, to work with. That's my initial reaction, but I'm happy to go, and if you want to have more of a council discussion, and maybe a school trustees discussion, that says, is this a, to kind of respond to some of those key questions first, and then we do those dialogues, I'm happy to hold off. I, I guess I kind of, looking for a little direction from you all, and what you think would be helpful or not hindrance.
So it kind of sounds concurrent to me. You know, I think Jessie and I, and maybe some others, need to sit down and look at what you've written more clearly and deeply, and envision the operational side of it, and what the potential barriers are and so forth, while you continue what you just described, and then maybe connecting us back before anything kind of came to the council, I think.
Right, and I don't, I wouldn't see that as being a September item at this point. I mean, it's going to take a little time to develop the next steps, to make sure we do it right, rather than fast.
Yeah.
So...
And it has budget implications, so we want, you know, October, September, October should be some work time, and then get it on the council and board's agendas before and during budget cycle.
Okay. So we'll look for more from the, the teams as we go over the next month and a half or so? Does that work?
Sure.
All right, good. Any other questions, thoughts on the equity portion? All right, we are running a little bit behind. Um, oh, sorry, Kasia.
Oh, um, I'll try to be, uh, free, but I did just want to make a few observations.
No, please.
For the record, Kasia Rahm and Sue Nefron worked on facilities project with all our very joyful visitors to the community of Winuski. First, uh, you know, Alex alluded to this a little bit, and perhaps this has been your experience as well, but people around the state are really paying attention to what you're doing. Um, you know, Sue and I have had inquiries in other communities who are seeing this work progress, and, uh, we just presented at the Vermont Council on Rural Development to over sixty municipal leaders who nodded their heads when we said, you know, we want to talk about what you do when you're sick of having a conversation about having a conversation about equity. Um, and that's where a lot of communities are, so they are really paying attention and are really, uh, and that shouldn't scare you, that's a really good thing. And that relates to my second point, um, which is Sue and I have spent a lot of time thinking about what makes Winuski special, because the work doesn't always progress this far, and, um, people aren't always so civil and respectful around the table during these discussions. Um, you know, there's capital L leadership that I think makes that possible, and you'd be hard pressed to find a mayor or a superintendent who can speak so eloquently and humbly to these issues anywhere in the country, for that matter. So, you know, I think there's a lot of leadership writ large here, uh, but I also want to honor that there's a lot of everyday citizen leadership, uh, and it includes people who might disagree, who might not be bought into this, but stay through a whole presentation and really listen respectfully. That, people often make public comments and just leave the room afterwards and don't always listen. Um, and we saw that from the start at the summit, where people showed up early, and we didn't ask them to be bought in, but to show up. And they did, and they stayed late. Um, and that says a lot about your community. And, you know, the third observation I would leave you with is that the opposite of supremacy or, you know, moving beyond that isn't subjugation or marginalization or silencing of anyone who's been dominant, it's interdependence. It's really honoring and recognizing that there are so many ways to be professional, successful, to excel, to be a good neighbor, to build community, and you all are really on the cusp of honoring all of those ways of being in Winuski. And I think that's really incredible work, um, and we certainly commend you all.
Thank you, Kasia.
Yeah, so as I was mentioning here, we're just a few minutes behind, uh, but we are, um, heading into a section here that is going to be right about an hour, unless we can push the, push the envelope a little bit, cut it back, and keep it about forty to forty-five minutes. Break or power through? Anybody need five? Good. Seeing none? Anybody? It's okay. All right. So the next section here, then, in our, uh, in our agenda is, normally all we do when we get together is an MOU, and that is a memorandum of understanding, and that is how do we operate together? Simple piece, uh, in the, in the MOU is the SRO officer, School Resource Officer. How do we share that position? We don't want to, um, we, we don't want to charge the community twice for that position, so we found a way to, to share that responsibility based on the time that they're available. I'll, I'll argue that it is an absolutely critical position, uh, in the school, not necessarily for the safety, but for the uniqueness of having the, the, the officer in the school and having the kids get comfortable with them as, as a human being and as a, as a partner in their, in their community. So this, now, though, we've expanded this a little bit for a little more education on what impacts both sides. How do, how do we, how do the things that the city is doing, what are the things that our city is doing, what are the things that the school board is doing, and how do they come together? We've got some information in here that I think will surprise, be interesting, hopefully, and hopefully create some dialogue. To the point that we just heard, please, if you have questions, thoughts, comments, concerns, criticisms, keep them positive, but by all means, please, uh, let us have them, because this is the place where we get those communications going. All right, so with that, um, Sean, do you want to lead the, uh, you got the...
Yeah, I don't know if you want to talk from there, or if you want to come on.
Uh-uh. Yeah, I can.
I think I can flip it from back there.
Okay.
Stay where you are.
I would like to stay here with my notes.
Okay.
It's fair.
Okay, it is working, I think?
Okay. All right. So I think, um, when Jessie and I were kind of charged, uh, last spring to, uh, start framing this discussion, and we started with the backwards design idea of, you know, why, why are we having this discussion, and what do we want you to really walk out of here with? And, uh, one of the, the more technical things is really understanding the, uh, the legal boundaries, which basically say that you, uh, you can't mix a lot of funds, but you can strategically coordinate. Um, you know, and we already do some of that strategic coordination through, through the MOU and all of the different things that are, uh, in there, but you can read A and B straight from statute. Um, so we want people to be really clear, so we don't, you know, step in it along the way as we navigate, uh, some of the complex waters that we're, uh, moving into in terms of implementation around bonds and cer, and other things. And then we really want you guys to be able to deepen your understanding of, um, the, the comprehensive and complicated financial landscape, um, across our city, and, uh, I think you started to do that in the first portion with the equity dialogue, really understanding, uh, the experience of as many of our communicate, uh, community members as possible, not just our own perspective and our next-door neighbor, but people across the city, um, and, uh, developing a deeper understanding of, of what all folks in Winuski are going through.
And if I could just say that, slight echo what Sean said, say it slightly differently. You, both groups of elected officials have a fiduciary responsibility to the city, and that fiduciary responsibility is different but informed by one another. And as Sean and I sat down to figure out how to communicate some of these, um, pretty technical things that we and our teams do behind the scenes to manage the budget and put forth services, we want you to understand, we want to provide you the best information we can to have a common language about how, how the services we are providing, um, from a financial perspective, impact our neighbors, and how the fiduciary responsibility the council holds, and the fiduciary responsibility the school trustees hold are mutually informed, but have sep, have different kind of processes and service delivery areas. So we're going to go over some key concepts, um, and kind of the big picture financial overview of both of our organizations.
Right. So that, we, we'd start here with just an overview and some, some thoughts on successes and challenges, uh, as we move forward. Thinking about it from the, the district perspective, I've been on the board now through eight years in, in year nine, uh, seen a lot of change, but one of the things that we have been proud of is the, the ability to, uh, develop budgets that we have been able to get passed in the city, um, on a pretty regular basis. I'll show you some data here in a minute, the, the challenges that come along with that piece. Our schools, our, our high school is moving to a proficiency-based education. This is a state, uh, mandated path, and we've directed that all the way down into the elementary school, and how do you align to get that moving through? We are one of the districts in the state that is one of the models of getting this in place, all the way down to the documentation of how you look at that, how do, how do you look at that across kids? One of the biggest successes I see over the last five to eight years is that the climate and the culture in this district has improved radically. That by, uh, my own voice talking to a ton of teachers often, and not just on a, on a short term, once, once, uh, you know, every five-year basis. The, the turnover rates among teachers, I'll get to, to retention here in a minute. Retention among teachers is not a huge issue. We are hiring teachers now that, um, are not new hires, that are not new graduates, because they're cheap, they can't survive in a classroom, we proved that. We are hiring teachers now in a certain sweet spot that we know what we're getting, five to seven, eight years of experience. We know they can handle the classroom, and we have, when we put openings out, how many did we have for the principal in a high school?
Thirty, in the thirties.
About thirty?
Yeah.
I think ten years ago, that number would have been maybe a single digit.
Yes.
Big, big difference.
There we go.
Um, the, the part of that, I think, is the board, the administrative, and the staff stability. It's, it's been pretty consistent across challenges. I had to put, I had to put that down here, because passing budgets is always a challenge. You got to put together a viable budget, uh, that, that works, uh, solves problems, but doesn't overspend, and we'll get to a little bit more of that as we go. One of the challenges maintaining the board focus on ensuring that the school is run well, not having the board focus be running the school. May sound like semantics, but when you get down into the, into the ditches, there's a huge difference, and the impact goes right back to climate and culture when you fail on that one. Uh, retention is, and I'll show you, that is the biggest challenge I see that we have right now, is when we get students into this school, keeping them here. We have data that shows, um, over the first four years, we've been, we've been tracking data on reading. Simple. Kid, we want one year of, one year of reading improvement each year. I don't care if it's a fourth grader reading at a second grade level, but one year is a big deal. Then you can do the interactions where you know that you need to bring them up the other year, right? We have data that shows that when we start in kindergarten, we had, I'll pick a number that's pretty close, sixty-five kids, um, take this test, and we followed them for four years. End of four years, there were only thirty of those same kids here, but we still had sixty. So we're turning over about half of that group. It's not half overall, but that particular cohort turned over half of the kids. We've also proven in the past that if kids stay here from, at the minimum, fourth grade through the end, they do very well through high school, and they do very well when they get done standardized testing and a whole nine years. It's that retention piece that I see as one of our bigger challenges. And I'm not going to say, as we have in the past, I've heard it said, well, it's housing that scares people away. It's, it's a range of things, but that is one of the focuses that we've, we have to, I think, as a group, uh, understand and figure out, if there's anything back to our previous discussion, there anything in there that we can do differently? That's a nutshell of where I see it.
So for the city side, um, so one of the successes that we are calling out here is the move from planning to implementation, because over the last five, ten years, there has been a ton of community visioning and planning work. There is the development of four-based code and the vision for our gateways, uh, the strategic vision that guides our work and where our focus is, um, the master plan, the specific vision of Main Street. Like, there have been many stages of planning and receiving information, and we are now in a position where we can implement this community vision that already exists. You are seeing that as, you know, the downtown is almost done, very close to done. Um, we are moving towards the, towards working on our Main Street project. Um, we're in the very early stages of East Allen. So there's a, there's a big shift there, and I think that's important for our role as a city council to realize, is that we have a lot of vision and community input to work from. Obviously, we need to continue receiving it, um, but we have a foundation to work from, and we need to implement what has already been put forth. We are seeing growth in the city that is... We are seeing growth in the city that is steady, consistent, and also strategic. We've seen a successful change in our downtown, we're starting to see that happen in other corridors of the city. We are seeing a diversity of housing options coming in, right? So we have space for different groups in our city. We are seeing housing, well, to some degree, housing and businesses coming up in different locations, right? So it's not just one part of the city that's growing, we're seeing this all around. And we have successfully been employing a strategy of investing in municipal infrastructure in order to spur on private investment to see this growth. You know, so with the downtown, we did $47 million in public investments that created 94 million in private investments and we've seen real growth in the grand list value there. Similarly, that is our plan with Main Street, you know, updating this water infrastructure to support more capacity, undergrounding the utilities so we can build more density, so we can, we can accommodate the more growth and maximize these spaces for our city. Something that's challenging about that is that we have, over the course of the downtown, the TIF deal, that investment requires us to pay it off and so we have not seen the actual financial growth yet. So for the last, what do we get, 20 years in to that?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? Oh, right, we have four left. For the last 16 years, we have seen growth in the facilities that we're supporting and the people we're supporting, but we haven't actually seen that increase in funding to support that. We are also challenged by full community engagement, the previous discussion, obviously. We have like a 25% voter turnout, I think, on a good, a good election. You know, so between that and, and lack of representation and just making sure that we are including these different experiences, trying, that we are trying to get more of these experiences pulled into the work that we're doing, is a challenge that we continue to face.
All right, I'm going to go stand up there just so this thing doesn't keep working off.
I'll join up. Sure.
Well, the Winuski Pool is a success, not only for our learning, life learning scale for students at Winuski High School or in the middle school. That project is in full, full tilt and is scheduled to finish on time in May, so I think that's another city Winuski success.
Another good infrastructure investment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll join you.
So we always start in the school district and I know Jesse does too, you know, you want, you want to help people understand like why we are here, why you are governing, why we are operationalizing your governance ideas and concepts. And for, for us at the, at the school district, it's through an end statement, which is a specific type of statement through policy governance and it has some very specific elements in it. And this was built about eight years ago with a very inclusive community process, neighborhood conversations, where people talked about what it is that they wanted for the young people in our community by the time they left our school district. And so I kind of highlighted in green the, the three big areas that we really work on, the college and career readiness, healthy, productive and successful lives, and local and global community engagement. And the way that we report progress on that, every month the board gets in their board report, those three areas, they get kind of a bullet list of all the different things that are happening in the school and in the community that, that students and staff are taking part in relative to those. And then, of course, we do an, an annual report out on progress related to those indicators towards the end statement.
So similarly...
Yeah, sorry, I was just going to say, so we're going to kind of flip, we're going to, we did the, the high overarching of the school, we're going to shift to the city and then the city's going to go into more depth and then we're going to kind of come back to the school after that.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah.
So similarly, we went through as a city, a process of surveying and engaging residents to determine what are our values as, as a community. And what's come out is this value statement about, Winuski is an opportunity city, this is a place where anyone can come, everyone is welcome, we have space for people from different backgrounds in different circumstances. And this has historically been the case, right? Like we have a history of immigration coming here and, you know, starting, starting new lives in our city. We, we are welcoming, that's the city we want to be and we want this to drive, this idea of being a place of opportunity and welcoming for everyone, it kind of drives our strategic vision and the work that we do. Do we still have the clicker?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
So based on that, we have the strategic vision, this is what has been guiding the city leadership and council for some time. This is what has driven the creation of our master plan, of our resident commissions that are helping us with policy. So these are the things that are important to residents, economic vitality. We want to have a sustainable city, we want to be vibrant and have a plan to stay that way into the future. Our residents value infrastructure. It's really important to have the systems and the physical structures in place to support the community we're trying to be. We care about safe, healthy, connected people. We are a small town, we are a town with a lot of different people in it and we, we like that small feeling in being connected and having safe places to gather. And finally, housing, housing is something that consistently comes up as important, it's foundational to someone having a safe, healthy, connected life. Making sure that we have housing options for everyone who lives here is really important to us.
All right, so I will take a few minutes to talk through a couple of slides here on operationally, so that's the policy level vision of who we are as a, as a city organization. Do you want to probably click? So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about operationally who we are, the services we provide and how the council's elected officials manages the authority they have to collect taxes from our residents and have our city be as affordable as possible. I want to also acknowledge, we have tonight Angela, our finance director here, solidatorian graduate from Winuski High School, lifelong Winuski resident, although she doesn't anymore, we're going to get her back at some point. And also Julie, our human resources manager, who helps oversee our whole organization. So if I say something incorrect, experts, please jump in. So this is who we are, we have 56 full-time employees and 46 part-time employees. And with those employees, we run a full-service municipality in our 1.4 square miles. So we have 24/7 police coverage, we run a wastewater treatment plant, we plow streets, pave streets, install sidewalks, maintain parks, maintain facilities, issue building permits, have a fire department that's partially volunteer, part-time and partially full-time run a rental registry and provide community services, library, parks and recreation and a senior center. This is our, a quick snapshot of our total budget, so we have an operational budget of about $14 million. Only 7.3 million of that this year is from the general fund. When we talk about the general fund, what we mean is those dollars that are raised primarily by property taxpayers, our, our neighbors here in Winuski, as well as some fees and fines and other small revenue streams. However, half of our budget, 49% of our budget, is other, other parking, other funds. So you see the examples there, water, wastewater, parking, community development, rental registry, et cetera. These are funds that are paid through the ratepayers. So when you pay your water bill, your wastewater bill, your parking ticket, et cetera, or your parking contract, it goes through this fund. So I think that's important to note that only half the budget is in the general fund and only 78% of that half of the budget is raised by property tax dollars. So grand list, this is a key concept that I, we talk about a lot operationally, but is hard to understand, but is critical to the affordability of our community. It is how we calculate our tax rate and a piece of how the state calculates the education tax rate. So the grand list, and forgive me for those of you who know this, is the aggregate value of all of the assessed properties in the city. So my house value, or my house is assessed at a certain dollar amount, Matt's house is assessed at a certain dollar amount, Christine's house, et cetera, VSAC, our industrial park, all of our assets are assessed a certain amount and the sum total of that, it's about $600 million, is the total grand list of the city of Winuski. The chart shows that change over time. I think that there is a perception in our city that we are seeing a lot of growth and development, which we are and we are very fortunate for in our state, a lot of communities are not seeing this, but that is pretty steady development. Over the last five years, we've seen that grand list grow about 1% a year. So it's not a drastic increase, it's about $5 million in new assessed value. For context, what that, what $5 million of assessed value looks like is 394 Main, which is right across the street, that new apartment building, not the four-story, five-story one, but the two, three, two and a half story one, is assessed at $1.3 million. So when we think about a goal or policy we want to set to incentivize development or strategically grow, if we set growth targets for ourselves, that's the, the context in which you need to think about that. On the city side, this is different on the school side, on the city side, that 1% growth adds about $57,000 of new revenue to the city every year. So if you get that average 1% grand list growth, you have 57,000 new dollars to, to budget in a year without raising taxes. $57,000 is not enough to cover the healthcare increases just for the city of Winuski, regardless of any other asphalt increases, program increases, anything like that. Have I said anything wrong yet, Angela? Good. So this is the, when the elect, when the city council sits down to think about how we maintain the affordability in the city of Winuski and thinks about that tax rate, this is what they have control over. They have control over our expenditure, our general fund expenditures and other fund expenditures and the services we provide, so they can increase services, they can decrease services, and that will increase or decrease our expenditures. They also have some tangential control over our growth. Do we want to incentivize growth? Do we want to grow that grand list so there are more of us to share that tax burden? Do we want to scale back those incentives and grow less and, and cover more costs with fewer of us? And this is the very clear, and I feel a little braggy saying this in front of Sean because mine is so clear, how the tax rate is calculated on the Winuski pool side. So you take on our total expenditures, our total general fund budget that the council approves every year to bring to town meeting, so we save the amount to be raised by property taxes. So we know we're going to provide this level of service, it's going to cost us this much, we have these other revenue streams, this is the amount we need to raise by property taxes, we take that, divide it by the grand list value essentially, that is the tax rate. We're raising so many, so many dollars based on so much about assessed value, that's it, that's the entire calculation. So that's it, when you think about maintaining affordability in our community and how you, the fiduciary responsibility you have to control that cost, these are, these are the two primary things you have to work with. So with that, we're going to switch over to the school operations for a minute and then we're going to toggle back and forth again.
Yeah, so I won't read through the whole organizational chart here, but you can see the city, the citizens of Winuski and they elect the board of trustees, who hires a superintendent to run the organization and to implement the, the ends, the elements of the end statement. And then I'm fortunate to have an outstanding team, Rebecca Goulet, who is here and she's going to come up and talk to you a little bit about the finance side. And then the central office, which a number of functions that I oversee. And then we have building level principals, Sarah Robb in the elementary oversees pre-K5 and then we have co-principal model at the middle high school. We have Kate Groden, who is primarily responsible for the middle school, but they also collaborate on functions, grade six through 12. And then we, Jean Berthium, who is our new co-principal and primary responsibility for the high school. And then Robin Hood, who is director of support services and early learning, and then Kirsten Colgard over there on the right, who is our, she has a, a really big job in that she has English language learning and curriculum and we're looking in the future to try and create capacity. That's a, it's, it's too much for one person to do and we can do a lot more, both on the curriculum side and the AL side if we're able to, to split that position in the future. And basically the way we organize, we have all of the different folks underneath there that each administrator has supervision and evaluation responsibilities for and so forth. So that is how we are organized.
So to stay along the same themes that Jesse had done, operating budget of the school, just short of $18 million. Just about 80% of that is salary and benefits. The benefits piece has been a wild card in the recent past, that went up almost 12% in last year's cycle, that's been taken over by the, heading toward a statewide teacher contract for the benefits piece only. So that'll, that'll be a bit of a change as we move forward. And the note about the 40% raise from property taxes, when, when Jesse had mentioned that you take, equals a tax rate, I'm not going to show you one of those because the guy that does it at the state level, I'm not sure he could lay it out cleanly that you would understand it. We'll get into some of that as we go. Essentially, the way the education funding for this, for the state is run is based on a whole bunch of factors, you're either a receiving community, a giving community or in the middle. We happen to be a receiving community, which means that when we send money into the state, basically the way that the, the whole thing works is we send our money into the state, all the municipalities, and then they send it back to the school districts after it runs through this formula. In essence, we send in 40 cents, they send us back a dollar. So that's, that's the way, that has worked out over the last eight years, we looked at it, it's pretty, pretty consistent. So we have a fund balance right now, which is not capital reserve, that is for emergency funds of just short of $400,000, that is in there because over the years it has been accumulating with a, a fund balance each year. The only year I remember it being large was one of my first years here, it was about $400,000, we put it into the capital reserve fund. And then after that, it's been on the order of 30, $40,000 and on a $16 million budget, that's probably as close as you'd ever want to come in your, in your own home budgeting. So we, we have some fund balances for emergencies. Our water line over here that bust, busted three times this winter, we finally changed the whole thing, that's what this, these funds were kind of set up for, so we don't have to run short as we go through. Sean, programmatic?
Yeah, so Rebecca's going to talk about the federal budget piece.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay.
That's why we, that's why we bring Rebecca on the back row.
So for those who don't know me, I'm Rebecca Goulet and I've been with the district starting my 21st year in my current role for the last 11. But since I've been here, I've always worked with the federal grants, so I'm going to just give you a little background on some of that information so that you have an understanding of what that money can be used for. A lot of times, you know, it's great to get federal grants, there's always a lot of strings attached, so you have to be really careful about how you use them and how you report them and how you report them. So the biggest grant that we get here at the Winuski School District is called the Consolidated Federal Grant, which actually is comprised of several different title grants from the federal government. So we get Title I money and that's generally money that's used, you could use for like remediation, for kids with learning disabilities that aren't special ed with reading and math and those types of things, death summer school and, and provides like math interventionist or reading interventionist. Title II-A is for professional development, so that can be used for things like staff training, or it can also be used for some of our coaches, coaches. So we have a reading coach, we have a math coach, we have a coach at the high, high school, middle school that does coaching on the GXs and that's the kind of money can be used for that. We also have Title IV, which went away for a while and it's come back. It's really for the safe, part of being a safe school, you can use it for things like behavior interventionists and other safety issues in the school. And what we do here is we combine all those monies together, have a school-wide plan. Because of our demographics, we're allowed to do that. And when you do that, that money becomes invisible, so you can use that money for all of those needs, but if you have more money in Title I and you don't have enough money in Title IV to do something, you, you just mix the money up. And these are all based on formulas based mostly on our free and reduced. And these are all based on formulas, based mostly on our free and reduced information. So every year when we budget, we kind of estimate what we think we're going to get. It hasn't changed a whole lot, hasn't fluctuated a whole lot. We haven't experienced the drop as other districts have, so we've been very fortunate with that. So every spring, the leadership team works together and brings our needs or our wants for the district, and we go through that and prioritize it. And it really covers a lot of positions in our district that are really vital to the work that we do. We have a couple other smaller grants. So we have the English Language Learner Grant, which is a federal grant, and that is determined by the number of new Americans that we have in our school, and that does change from year to year. Over the last 10 years, it's been pretty, pretty steady at around 50, 50 grand, and we get those allocations in the spring as well. We use that money generally to support one of our homeschool liaisons, and then some summer school work with our new Americans, and sometimes we're able to do like parent classes and other learning opportunities for the community with that. So that's a really important part of our, our community as well. And then the next two are IDAB flow-through and IDEKK pre-K. And those are both grants that are funded by the federal government as well, and it's a formula based on the number of students that we have on individual educational plans or obtain special ed services. So that number is of, does change every year. We've continued to increase that as our numbers grow. And that money that we use helps us support the special ed services. So it's used mostly for salaries. It's used to support our program assistance in our therapeutic classrooms. And then the preschool money is used for our OT, our occupational therapists, and our PT therapists that come in, and we also support our summer school through that. So those are all really important things to make our school run as well. The Medicaid IEP money is generated based on claims that we put together and ask for reimbursement. We have two people in the district that work with our special educators. So any student that's on an IEP that receives Medicaid, like children that have Dr. Dinosaur, we work with their parents to get consent and their doctor's authorization that the services that we're providing for them are needed for their growth and wellbeing. And every month, the Medicaid clerks bill this out to the state, and we get reimbursed. So the money is generated based on the money that is generated by special educators and the special ed services that are provided. However, the money cannot be used for those services when you get it back. When you get that money back, you have to use it to enhance the entire school district. So some of the things that we use that money for are other instructional assistants or program assistants in other parts of the building that don't necessarily work with children on IEPs. We also use that money for preschool assistant, as well as some of our behavior interventionist work. Yep, the next one is Medicaid Early and Periodic Screening and Diagnostic and Treatment, and we just call it EPSD tape. And this money is generated by people that work in the district. It's our healthcare team, our nurses, and our guidance counselors. So they, every quarter, we submit, reim, a claim for that, and we're given a reimbursement for that money as well. And then that money comes back to the district, and we do a, a plan every April that I work with the wellness coordinator on. And generally, the money that we receive from that, we invest back into our SAP counselor that we contract with CenterPoint. So that's really helpful for our students as well. The refugee grant also would go along with a Title III grant. That's from the Department of Health and Human Services in Vermont. And once again, we get an allocation every spring, and I work with Kirsten to develop that budget. And once again, that's used for different supports, like homeschool liaisons and extra services for our ELL students. And then one of the other final grants that we have from the federal level is our 21st Century Title IV grant, and it's really to promote after-school programming, and it's something that we actually co-write with the city. It's $121,000 this year, and we have a director, Suzanne Scaaplested, that oversees that, and that, she's actually paid from the general fund to oversee this budget. And of that, the city is sub-granted about $25,000, which helps fund the tutoring and some of the library activities and some of the recreational activities. So it's another really good use of our partnership with the city. It's been very successful.
And that whole section, Rebecca, that is the second item on the ballot when we vote for the budget that says, will we accept the $2.4 million of federal money? And the answer to that is, we want to accept that because it's for programs that are mandated for the use. So, you know, we have to ask if we want to accept them. But I'm curious at how many people just don't understand exactly that that is, you know, these are funds the federal government's going to give us to run programs that are mandated. So we kind of want to have a yes on that to accept those funds.
And the one thing to keep in mind when we vote on that number, we never know exactly what that number's going to be, because they don't have the allocations out until way past town meeting day, so it's always approximately or an estimated amount. And we do generally pretty well, but sometimes we get a couple surprises. Any questions?
Yeah, so we laid it out that way for a purpose to show you that we, it's great that we get the support. It's also, it requires a lot of capacity within the organization to manage these grants. And as, as Rebecca alluded to, not only procuring them, but then all the strings that are attached to procurement along the way, and reimbursement and everything, it, it is a heck of a lot of work with all of these different pots of money. So thank you, Rebecca, for all of that work. So the last pieces I wanted to mention is that we are very active in going out and getting money to try and support the work that we're trying to do. And so if you may remember, about eight, nine years ago, there was a, a pretty significant grant between Burlington School District and Winuski School, or the high schools. Hal was a part of that and, and the director of Partnership for Change. And that's really what jump-started us in our proficiency-based work at the middle and the high school. And so after two, two, three-year cycles of that work and funding, the money went away, as it should have. They made a significant investment, Nellie May Education Foundation in us. And we started looking for, you know, a couple of years ahead, we started looking for opportunities to bridge the gap, so we could really continue the momentum with that work. We were fortunate enough to get a planning grant from the Barr Foundation, who's out of Boston, for about $225,000. And then just this last summer, we got a three-year grant from them for $500,000 to really focus on community-based learning. And so we have that for the next three years. And then in addition, as part of the state-level accountability program for schools, which then feeds into the federal level of accountability, Vermont chose to develop their own system. And as part of that, they identify students for our schools, particular schools for school improvement, and then also for equity supports. So we were identified at the high school level for school improvement funds specifically related to graduation rates. We have the lowest four-year graduation rate in the state for very good reason. About 50% of our students in the high school are English language learners, and we are encouraging them to stay in high school more than four years because they need to be prepared for the next step in their lives. And if we're sending them out unprepared, that has a really negative impact for them individually and for their families, but also financially for, for us as a society, when we have students going and borrowing money and then dropping out of college and so forth. All the costs of, of lost opportunities for students in the future. So those are some of the additional funds that we have to work with. CLA?
So as part, go ahead, as, as part of the, as part of the school funding formulas, there's a couple of pieces here coming, and this is a key piece, a key component that Jesse's going to touch here.
So one of the things we don't talk about a whole lot is the work the city and school do to administratively support one another. So this, one of the things the city does is to manage the grand list, to assess all the parcels in the city, to collect the taxes, and then remit them to the school. Obviously, that's a core municipal government function. So common level of appraisal, I'm going to talk about because we manage it, but it really is informing the school tax rate. So the common level of appraisal is the dip, the method the state uses to ensure that each community is paying its fair share in the statewide education property tax. Basically, it's a ratio between, when you think of the grand list that I talked about earlier, it's the ratio between the assessed value and the fair market value. So on our books, we have an assessed value for every parcel. Parcels then sell for a fair market value rate, and that ratio is the CLA. So if that's equal, if my assessed value on the books equals the amount I can sell my house for, the CLA is one. As my sale price goes up, which is what's currently happening in our market, the grant, the assessed value stays the same, I can sell my house for more than it's assessed at, the CLA goes down. The state's saying, you all can afford to pay more than you are paying. So as the, and the, then the state requires when we hit 80%, so right now, we're at 88.5. When we hit 80, when we hit 80%, we're mandated to do a citywide reappraisal. We are thinking, at the council retreat this year, we talked about gearing up to do that slightly before we are mandated to do it. We don't want to be forced into it, we want to choose when we are ready to do it. I'm going to leave it there and let you talk about how it impacts the school tax rate.
We'll take that from there. So, do you want to do this?
Go ahead. Yeah. So the equalized pupil count, so CLA, equalized pupil count, and then your expense side, those are like the three biggest contributors to the ed funding formula. So when we think about equalized pupil counts, basically, this is not just counting the, the little people and the big people in the school, but they have different weights according to this system. So they're listed up here for, so our pre-K students are .46. So when you say like a dollar amount for 1.0, we get .46 for, for preschool students. A K8 student, they're like, I guess the most normal, you'd say, they're a 1.0. Nine through 12, it costs a little bit more to, to educate high school kids, so they get a little bit more of the weight at 1.13. Then we have some additional waitings because through Act 60, Act 68, in terms of equitable support for students, we know that students that require, that are qualified for free or reduced lunch and English language learners, you need some additional support to educate students with those profiles. So you get another .25 or .20. Okay? So, you know, I, I could give you a little quiz, I guess, on what a high school student that is ELL and qualifies for free lunch, what would their waiting be? 1.45? 1.58, correct. Yeah. So then what happens is, so we report all of this data into the state, and they give us a final, what's called equalized pupil count. This past year, it was like 990.2 or something like that. Previous year, it was 1,000. So when that goes down, that sends the tax rate up. Okay? So similar to CLA, it's that inverse relationship that happens. So Mike wants to talk a little bit about how this works in terms of demographics, because we have some planning that we do each year and some data that we get around future populations.
So we've been running with this, Niasse here has, has, or Nezdek, sorry, has, has been doing some planning for us for the past few years on what is the population of, of students in Winuski schools through, in this case, 2027? It shows about 10 a year growth, if you look through time. Interesting data, but we actually look backwards over the last six years, and it's pretty much following the same pattern. So year to year, we see that we are in fact growing, which is different than a lot of places in the state. So next, then, so, so, and this would be, this would be the, the count the eyeballs and divide by two count, not the equalized pupil that we just, that, that you do all the waiting for. So then, when we get to...
Did you want to go back?
Spending? No, right here is good. So, so spending, equalized pupil is the measurement by which you look across the state, and how are we spending per pupil in each district? Is by equalized pupil? This is the rank of the districts within the state. This first number is our rank within the total of how much, how many dollars we spend per student in this district. So we're, you, you can see the number going down here, 286 to 256, that's a, a function of the work doing to consolidate districts around the state as we go through. But we are 200th out of 256 in the per pupil spending. Lower third, well down into the lower third, and we, we've been there. I would argue that this district does a lot more with the dollars we get than a lot of places have, are forced to. So we, we get a lot more out of it. Just note real specifically this step, these, these three, we're going to get to that one here in the next, in the next portion. So if we go one more. So how do, we put this together because it shows something that is not necessarily obvious. CLA out on the end, we'll get to that in a second. Equalized pupil here, percent change in our expenses. So we actually control this piece, and that is the, how much are we actually going to increase our spending? This past year, we added a development and communications director. Development director going out and trying to secure grants and funding for our capital project. Hopefully, they can raise a significant portion of money to put against that base. We figured that that was a good investment. The only other investment we made was an ELL elementary, where the staffing ratio was 50 to 1 in the elementary school. Unsustainable. So we figured that we had to. If you look at the last four years, I highlighted these because the percent spending increase is all around 6%. 6% change. Just look at the next four, which is the percent change in the tax rate. Last year, 5.83% increase in the spending, tax rate went down. Doesn't make sense unless you start looking at the, this, this piece over here, and that's where the equalized people, pupil counts and the CLA come in. As Jesse noted, you can see that the CLA is continuing to drop, as we would expect based on houses selling for above the, the assessed value. But we expect this to continue. I think that the full 3% here was a little bit more than we expected. The significant impact, though, this year was the equalized pupil back to the start in one of the challenges, and that is keeping the kids here. Maintaining that through time is a key component because it fits into the budget. All I really wanted to show here is, for the last four years, the spending hasn't changed significantly, but your, your tax rate is all over the map, depending on some of these other factors. Over the last 10 years, 2.2% over the total timeframe per year average. Reasonable. Lately, you know, we're going.
Could, could anybody hazard a guess as to why the equalized pupil count went down in that, those last couple of years, from 2018 to 98?
Are you losing ELL students?
And why do you think that might be?
They're moving to Ohio.
No.
Cut back in the, in the region.
Federal immigration policy, yeah. So we're getting fewer.
Yeah.
So that's been the, yeah, that's been the, the biggest challenge in the, in the past year.
So as we sit down with our percent change, and we decide on how much we're going to actually change the spending in the district for the programs that we believe we need, there are multiple pieces of information that when we vote on a budget in March, we don't get until May, until, until the session of, of the legislature closes. So we're a little bit blind on this number as to exact until after the fact, in a lot of cases. We know what this is, but we really don't know in a lot of cases what exactly that tax factor is going to be.
Do you have a sense of the equalized pupil number in advance?
Yeah, yeah, we, we have these as we move forward. We don't necessarily know that this 3% change is going to have what kind of an impact on the tax rate itself. We can, we can guesstimate, model, but...
We don't know CLA until July. We know it in July. The grand list is set every year on April 1st, it's lodged in June, we send it to the state, and we get the CLA in July with the property tax rates.
Continue to move here because we're going to be real late here.
So I can fly through the next two. So this we just put up to, to tell you the story of the, again, why we're doing this together. The green is the city tax rate. Annually, over the last couple of years, the blue is the school tax rate. The reality is our bodies sit individually and do this work and do this heavy thinking. The residents see one bill. You know, it's broken out, but they see one bill, and the purpose of this is to have a better understanding together of how both of those conversations are, are impacting our neighbors. I wanted to spend just two minutes talking about tax increment financing, because this is going to be an incredibly big deal for our city over the next five years. The council has charged me and our new finance committee with thinking about how we plan for the expiration of the TIF. So tech, just really quickly, tax increment financing districts. We have one established in 2000, we took on our first debt in 2004, it expires in 2024, and we are on track to successfully retire that debt. So this is the easiest way I can explain it. So this is the assessed value of the properties in the TIF district, the... The properties in the TIF district are every property that touches the Rotary up East Island to the railroad bridge. So they're assessed at this value starting with the, the date when the TIF was created. Then investment is made both in the municipal infrastructure and in the private development. As you see here, it's grown about $90 million. This increased, they've paid their full property tax bill based on their new assessed value, but that delta, this new value that they are paying goes solely to pay off the debt service for the public infrastructure. So until 2024, we are only collecting this for municipal services and for the ed fund. All of this is going to pay off debt. When the TIF expires, that new, that revenue is returned to its original funding source. So what that means for the municipal side is in FY '25, about $1 million of new revenue will flow into the general fund that we are not currently, that we're currently using for debt service. So, just jumping, keep going, Sean? So Sean and I talk a lot about coordinating on efforts, how our big projects are informing one another, how they're going to be beneficial for the community, what we should move forward, et cetera. You all are very familiar with our multiple bond votes we have taken in the last couple of years. I think it's important to note what of those bond votes are solely funded or majority funded by the general fund, by our local property taxpayers, and what of those are funded by either other ratepayers or user fees. So you see that broken out here. I wanted to hearken back to something Council Colston said over a year ago before we took the Main Street bond vote, which was, the council really charged the staff and the community was saying, give us a yellow light. Approve these bonds, let us go forward and see what revenues we can bring into the city to see if these projects can happen. Right now, we've brought in about $10.5 million in grants and low interest loans to cover the municipal side of these bond votes. So I think that that's a real testimony to not only your all belief in us to do this work, also our congressional delegation who's extraordinarily gone to bat for us to bring in funds to the city. Every dollar we can bring in from a federal funding source or a state funding source defrays that cost for our local property taxpayers. Anything else we want to say on this?
No, we hope our delegation might help us, too.
I would like to add, too, that as part of those discussions about like, we can, you will give us up to this much money, but we are going to make it work for you. We're going to find this outside funding. We've also discussed, do we implement this project differently? Do we do this in a phased approach over time? That there are different ways to approach it, to be sensitive to what we can actually afford to complete.
So that's a great transition, thank you. So these are, Sean and I want to end on kind of, what does this all mean to you as elected officials? What is going to be before you in the next months, year, or years about moving our community forward within the vision that was established as well as in an affordable way? And the mayor just brought up on the city side, a really key component. What are, there are going to be decisions that you need to consider about phasing some of these capital projects that, that spread out that burden to our residents in a different kind of way. On the city side, you also need to think about service maintenance or service expansion or service reduction. Are there things we're doing that we could stop doing? Do we want to maintain our current service level? Do we want to expand any service areas? Balancing that growth, how we are going to talk about and incentivize growth in our community or scale back growth in our community. And then you also will be faced with some decisions about regionalization. Are there, on the municipal side, we're having a number of conversations about their services we're providing locally that our surrounding communities are also providing? And are there economies of scale to regionalize some of those service delivery systems? And with that...
Well, and on the school district side, I would just add, the biggest one that's going to be coming up for us is kind of this tension between the debt service coming on for the capital project and being able to pass budgets when there is the uncertainty around knowing what the tax impact on a budget's going to be, the equalized pupil count, how that's going to impacted, federal immigration policy, if that changes or not, what continues, the CLA, we're going to assume is going to continue to decline, which will, you know, up the tax impact on the school side. And then we have a couple of other things. Act 173, which is, they're completely changing the funding formula for students with special needs. So it's going to be a census-based formula and there's definitely going to be some implications on that side that we are learning about. And then healthcare. As you may know, school staff healthcare is at, you know, being negotiated at the state level for all employees, but we don't know what the result of that is going to be. And we may not get it until January, so we're going to have to do some forecasting.
Which we know by definition is never accurate, but close.
Do the best we can with what they are re-aging to get, right?
So finally, Sean and I want to emphasize that we are very much in, I think, lockstep on the value of this community, the value of the vision that both of the boards have set out for us with community input, and delivering those services in a way that is affordable and responsible and in the best partnership we can. So there's ongoing, we probably talk a couple of times a week, our staffs talk often, there's ongoing communication. We're excited about this, this conversation tonight and getting the elected officials knowledgeable and educated about each other's fiduciary responsibilities and upcoming decisions. And of course, moving forward, we think that there's going to be a lot more opportunities through what we talked about earlier tonight, as well as the new cooperation between the communications staff on the school side and the city side to really do that community messaging in a way that tells the story about who we are, how we're growing, and how we're trying to provide a community that's open and accessible and best serving all. Last minute.
Thank you.
Back in 2005, in that area, the city of Winuski refinanced a whole downtown district of 17-year loan. So that should be coming to an end pretty quick.
Yeah, that, that...
And what's going to happen with all those dollars?
So the TIF district has been refinanced a couple of times. The most recent was in 2014, and it is due in 2024, will be paid off in May of 2024. Those are the TIF district dollars that Jesse was referring to. Our finance commission discussing rolling back into our offers and rather than having them just eaten up by what we're doing now to use them in a meaningful way. How do we strategically manage that financial change for our community?
Just curious.
And that's a commission of resident volunteers, so we're looking for participation from the community to make those decisions.
Okay. Any other questions? Great. Next on the agenda then, I would like, if I could, from folks to understand if this was worthwhile, understanding how things work in order to do this again. I thought, I thought just getting together for the MOU was interesting, but it got to be a rubber stamp because you didn't change but two words in here as we go through to get together for that. This, to me, seemed a little bit more meaningful, so I'd like input to see if that's something that we do as we go forward.
I actually think that it's a great educational video for all of our citizens and community. One of the things, as a mathematician, as a statistician, like, I cannot understand how I get the budget increase. There's no correlation with our tax rate. And we need to have folks understand why that is difficult, right?
No other business actually runs like that. Let's be honest. And if we're actually going to grow, as someone who loves numbers, I like logic in them and I want, you know, all to understand the, and I want the citizens to understand why this is difficult. None of us really are giddy when we see 9.5 percent tax rate when we only increase the budget by 6 percent.
And the previous year, the rate went down.
And I really do appreciate if the citizens would then also congratulate us when we do reduce the tax rate instead of only yell at us when we increase it.
Okay. We won't go there.
But yeah, I won't go there, sorry. But I did.
So with that then, I would like to turn to the next item on the agenda, the MOU, and I'll turn to Sean and Jesse. Any material changes to this document from what we have had?
So the only significant change from last year's MOU to this year's MOU is we discovered another way we cooperate that was not codified last year, which is providing public safety coverage for basketball games during the winter. So we, it's a common practice that we have done for years. There's agreement between the chief and the athletics director, and we just codified that agreement in this document.
Okay. And that's section seven on page two.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I had one question on here, and that was with regards to just the, in section one at the bottom of page one. It's just got a whole list, this will include but not limited to, and there's a whole bunch. Is the O'Brien tutoring, O'Brien Center tutoring program, or the O'Brien Center is still, that is?
It's under the library.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Otherwise, any questions, comments, thoughts? Clarifications? Okay.
We want you all to take action.
Yes. So we do need, do we need to do that in two different votes, I believe?
Two different votes, yes.
So, okay. So I would accept the motion from the school board to accept the MOU as outlined here. Okay. Any other discussion? Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? All right. Motion carries.
I would also entertain a motion to approve the city of Winuski and Winuski School District MOU as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Hal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Since we don't get together very often, anything else? At least for tonight, it was a long night, but it was a very, very good conversation. Appreciate that.
Oh, I would just like to share that Hal and I had taken some meetings with Representative Welch and Senators Leahy and Sanders' staff, Sanders. Just to introduce, introduce myself as a new, new, in the mayor's role, and then talk about what is going on in Winuski, the needs of Winuski. And we definitely brought up the capital project here, so.
Thank you.
We would like to work together wherever possible on that.
Great. Awesome. All right. Anything else? I would accept the motion to adjourn on the, I think we got to do that twice, right? For, to adjourn the joint, we're going to...
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
And I would entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. Motion by Jim, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Get into the consent agenda. I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda as written. Okay? Any discussion there? All right. And that was labeled as un, what was it, unapproved? Just because we haven't, we haven't voted on it yet, right?
The minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to, we're required by law to officially, to post the unofficial, after the board meeting, and then you officially approve them.
Yeah. I don't think I had seen that terminology before, so.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor, accepting the consent agendas, is aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Yes, that's Tori. She just joined us for this, for this piece. All right. So now into the executive limitations of financial conditions and activities. This is a discussion and approval section here for authorization of a new checking account to manage scholarships and awards at the high school. Now, last month, we decided to allow, it was in the minute, the minutes here, a new checking account for Act 1...
54.
54. This is now different? Just a brief background, please?
Yes. Is it actually on the agenda?
Not on the one that I have, but...
Yeah, I don't think it's on.
We put it...
What did I do?
I'm not sure, but I think we may have moved it to the September agenda.
This is the agenda that I...
Yeah, it's not. You didn't see it on your agenda.
I think you had the draft agenda.
Sometimes we have multiple agendas going.
Okay. I thought it was in the same page.
Yeah.
All right.
So we'll save that one.
Hold, please.
I'm just going into it.
Okay. So, check that. We're doing, so tonight, we are looking to give a final approval on a construction manager for the capital project. Last month, if you remember, we did the operation, the owner's project manager. We decided we would utilize Tom Barton. We had one other firm bidding, and we picked Tom Barton to do that. This one here now, so he will be our representative, watching over the goings and comings and goings of everything and making sure we stay on track pretty much everywhere, and he would be the first one to get involved for us. This one now, the construction manager, is a company that will coordinate all of the contractors in the construction of the capital project.
Pre-construction and construction.
Pre-construction and construction. They're going to, they're see, see it from beginning to end. So we had five companies pass us bids, and if you go to that document, that was the CM bid results, just a quick matrix. One of the pieces that we are bound by is having to pick the two, one of the two lowest bidders or those within 1 percent of that range. The percentages aren't in here, but the lowest bidder in this class was Rearc, out on the far right, and then DEW, the second one in, was the second. The Engel birth bid option one, if I remember with the percentages, that ended up being 1.3 percent off. So I think it was over the 1 percent. So we really only looked at the Rearc and the DEW. There was nothing in either of their bids that would have disqualified either one of them, which would have then let us go to the next one in the list from a cost standpoint, which would have been, you know, depending on how we did it, the net, you know, a different two. We decided that they were both capable, and we interviewed both last Monday, I think?
The 12th.
The 12th? I don't know, was that last Monday? I lose all track. Okay. And so we, after that, that interview process, did them both in the same day, sat down and discussed, and did we put the matrix in here of the, of the positives and...
No.
No? Okay. So we ended up then, I don't know, do you have anything else before?
No, I mean, I think in the memo, it was all pretty laid out, the process and the dates and the people who were there and, you know, I mean, we were lucky. We had, I think, five excellent firms with great, great reputations and experience who put in, passed the qualification process, put in great proposals, and then, like Mike said, the executive team looked at all five of those proposals in great depth and chose two who fit the definition of responsible bidders and were the two low bids, and decided to interview those two. And again, we were really fortunate to have two outstanding firms, and I think no matter what the decision is, either one of them would do a wonderful job for us. And so, so we did not put the name of the firm in the memo because we, this was backup that went out ahead of time and we didn't want that information out.
Right.
We did, Rebecca and I, as four, on behalf of the, the executive committee, we called DEW today and Rearc. And so the executive committee would like to recommend to the board that you award the bid to Rearc, who was the low bidder. And what we would ask you to take action on is selection of Rearc as the construction management team, and then authorization for us to do a contract with them for pre-construction. So if you remember last month with the OPM, we asked you to allow us to enter into a contract up to a certain amount with Tom Barton, which we have done. So this would be for the pre-construction fees that are listed in that bid. And then we would come back to you later when there's a, another contract for construction or portions of the construction that you would approve as well. So this is really to commit to, we really want to have the same construction management team throughout the project unless something unforeseen was to happen. So we want to commit to Rearc and then be able to enter into a contract for pre-construction fees with them.
So just a couple of things on the, just for completeness, I guess. One of the big components of picking between these two bidders was how they envisioned working through it to have a minimal impact on the school when it's in session and a maximum impact in the summer when nobody's here, right? So we went through pretty much in detail with both of them to try to understand how they were going to sequence the operations. It turned out, they were very, very close together in that sequencing and how they would do it. So that is all. So that has all really been laid out to the first order. More, more work to be done, obviously, as we go forward. Um, the other piece was, um, and I, I, I say it jokingly, um, but, um, I'm real serious. Our, our project manager, Tom Barton, has worked with nearly everybody. He's been in the business a long time. He's worked with nearly everybody, all of these companies, plus most of the people that are working for these companies in the positions that he's going to be working with. So I joke with him that he is in a complete conflict of interest, a hundred percent of these guys, so. But his view was with regards to how these, how these different teams operate. And at a very narrow level, I mean, we were able to break it down and say Rearc was probably the better of the, not the better of the, that was the one that we decided to go with for, for a lot of, a lot of different reasons. Depth and, you know, DEW had, had pretty good depth. They showed us that as well. I don't know, Alex, did I really miss anything there?
I'm going to emphasize again that we had really great companies be here. We would have won with either one. I did like Rearc, and if you all have not had a chance to watch the video that was included in the proposal, I encourage you to watch it and you can see, like, to me, they just had the wow factor at a price. And I was one of those people that like, am I being fooled by the technology? And I did not, was not. And I think the other benefits that you're going to see from this company is going to be beneficial, not only for the building of the school, but for the long-term maintenance of taking care and making sure that we have the documentation for the, for the infrastructure that is part of this school. Um, and I get sometimes technology changes, but at least it was part of their, um, conversation. Because this project is not going to be easy. And some of the things that we threw, made sure to listen to are the curveballs like the X six sixteen construction, the, the whatever building that they're going to decide to build in the front here.
Main Street.
Main Street, right? You know, we, and they were all thoughtful on this. Um, one of the things that I also want to add that I think makes us kind of cool about this team is that there is a resident of Winuski on the team. And he cares about this community. And there, I don't know why, maybe it shouldn't be something that I discuss, but that gave me a little bit even more like, we're going to be good, we're in good hands.
So I know the, the documentation in the, in the package here for each company is very, very extensive. I don't know, any questions, any thoughts, any, Rebecca, did we miss anything first?
No, they've been, they've been really comprehensive. I would just echo that, you know, we'd be lucky to work with either company. I think they have different, very different approaches, but I think both of them would get the job done. And I think it's our, it's our responsibility to go with a low bid and, and go forward with that.
All right.
The second meeting in a row, since we have a nice problem on our hands here. And so, yes, broke it down nicely, and I think Rearc sounds like a great choice.
Tori, any, any comments?
If it sounds to where we throw, what you all have experienced and what you feel like is the best for the school. Sounds great.
All right. Good, anything else? Good, all right. Um, so for item one then, I would, uh, accept a motion to, uh, select Rearc as our construction management team for this capital project.
So moved.
Any other discussion there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cell lag. Um, so then the other, the other item then was the, uh, contract, and that was the pre-construction piece at this point. And later on, we'll come back with the construction contract one, and we got to get that one started. So I would accept a motion to enable the, the executive team.
The executive team administrate, I mean, we'll do it, yeah.
To, uh, uh, enter into a contract for the pre-construction services with Rearc.
So moved.
Second.
All those, uh, any other discussion there? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So they have both been contacted as of today?
Yes.
Okay. And?
And there will be a, a press release that goes out either tomorrow or Friday.
Okay.
You don't need a second.
All right. Uh, anything else? That's all we had for this evening. Um, appreciate your, your time. It was a little more extended than I thought, and quite keep it on agenda time, but.
I would just suppose by saying that I'm really proud of our school board, the way they handled that today. I think it was the grace and the dignity and the wisdom that you all applied that I really was just very proud of.
Thank you. Yeah, I did.
Agreed.
Definitely. Okay, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That, that, there was no lag in the cell tower that time. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you again very, very much.